Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 6, 2022 School Committee Meeting. We have Melissa Plowman on the phone. MJ Burns is not in attendance tonight. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's going to be you. All right, we're going to go right to number four. Our high school representative will join us at our last meeting in April, and that brings us to public comment. Mr. Ragsdale.
All right, we have two people signed up for public comment tonight. First is Jeffrey Cohen.
Good evening, Jeffrey Cohen, 18 Cobalt Street in Wilmington. This committee has expressed significant concerns in a previous meeting about the precipitous drop in school enrollment. The numbers are truly staggering, as can be seen in the link below, which I provided. Wilmington has one of the highest attrition rates in the state, higher than 75% of Massachusetts schools during the school year 2021-2022. It's especially pronounced in grade eight, where a whopping 52.2% of students in eighth grade did not return to Wilmington schools. There were only four other districts in Massachusetts out of 350 that had a higher percentage of lost students from eighth grade. In the 2020-2021 school year, 36.9% of eighth graders did not return. According to the Massachusetts Department of Education, for the 2021-2022 school year, 9% of all Wilmington students did not return for the next school year. The loss of students has been rapidly accelerating over the past three years and has almost doubled the loss rate prior to 2018. What changed in the past three years? There are many factors involved in the decision-making process of parents who choose not to send their children back to our schools. Some of these reasons are not addressed in this public comment. Towards that end, Wilmington recently committed, completed an exit survey for the parents of the middle and high school to help better understand the reasons why many parents have not been happy with our schools. 286 parents responded to the survey, which I have in my possession. Some of the parents who responded to the survey indicated that they were not happy with the opportunities related to the curriculum or sports. However, there were a group of parents who expressed concern with political opinions being expressed by teachers, bullying, so-called remote learning, the lack of challenging homework assignments, the presentation of gender-neutral propaganda, the poor handling of COVID and mask mandates, woke ideology being presented in school, and critical race theory ideology being used in schools. These parents were so concerned, they pulled their child from Wilmington schools. There are likely many other parents who choose not to be confrontational by responding to this exit survey. This committee needs to take a close look at the survey results and come up with an action plan to mitigate future student losses and enrollment. During this review, serious considerations should be given to redirecting teachers to leave their political views at home, eliminating controversial programs like social and emotional learning, permanently eliminating mask mandates and remote learning, eliminating so-called diversity, equity, and inclusion indoctrination, and raising the education bar for all students. This committee should consider an opt-out clause for parents who don't wish to have their children indoctrinated with the woke SEL or DEI ideology. It is within the control of this committee to have a positive impact on student enrollment. Decisions made by this committee over the past three years have contributed to the precipitous drop in the number of students in our schools. This committee needs to review all decisions made, particularly in the past three years, that are likely contributing to these numbers. Hopefully, this committee will look in the mirror to find the answers so appropriate adjustments can be implemented. Thank you.
Second person signed up is Andrew Falanga.
My name is Andrew Falanga. It's my wife, Cassie Falanga. We live at A Christine Drive. My presence this evening is based on an accumulation of concerns, not least of all the infamous events of this past week that, as coworkers of mine have been asking about, what is going on in Wilmington? I began drafting this letter prior to that, so my appearance here this evening was inevitable. Wilmington is a small town. It's known for its sense of community, the pride those living here have for it. Our community is not a destination. Our community is the people we have living and working here. Those who live here, those who work here, are what make it the wonderful place that it is. I grew up in this town. In fact, I've spent about 34 of my 41 years of life as a Wilmington resident. For better or worse, I love this town. Many of my fondest memories were made here. Many of the friends that I made here as a child remain my closest friends to this day. I chose to start and raise a family here. I have three children. Two of them are elementary school age. The third is not yet school age. Of late, I've been feeling fortunate that my kids are so young. Most of the experiences that we've had so far at the Wildwood, the Woburn Street, and the North Intermediate have been great. However, my kids will not remain in elementary school forever. The overwhelming majority of information coming out lately has been negative. Whether it is hearing that 48% of our eighth graders leave Wilmington for Shawshank Tech or private schools, the Wildwoods shutting down for an oil leak, teachers continuing to work without a contract, the constant turnover of administrators at the middle school, the town finance committee wanting to cut $500,000 from the school budget, and now Wilmington is on the news for an unfortunate incident that took place at the high school last week. I know that there are a lot of great things happening on a daily basis as well. There are accomplished teachers. There are amazing students doing exceptional things every day. There are administrators and parents working tirelessly to make our schools better. I do not mean to discount those successes or efforts. I am grateful to all of these individuals. However, you have to look a lot harder and listen a lot harder to hear some of the good things recently. It seems as though Wilmington Public Schools are getting nothing but bad press, and the reputation of Wilmington Public Schools and the town itself is becoming tarnished. I understand these may be overgeneralizations, but this is how it feels to me and my neighbors. Wilmington Public Schools needs a win. I'm an educator myself in a neighboring community. I have witnessed firsthand what happens when a school committee, a superintendent, school administrators, and teachers work together for the common good. I have beheld collaborative relationships between building administrators and teachers. I have seen what effective union leadership looks like. I've observed data-driven decisions being implemented in impactful ways. I've noted the benefits of a welcoming and supportive school culture, just to name a few, and I want these things for Wilmington as well. The problems at the middle school, the problems at the high school, need to get sorted out fast. I admit I'm basing my comment primarily on anecdotal evidence and conjecture on my part. I have little data to support my hypothesis. However, it seems obvious to me that issues at the middle school turn people off to Wilmington Public Schools, and the high school is not attractive enough to overcome that distaste. Change is not always good, and change is not always fast, and in this case, it needs to be both. I do not have the answers. Perhaps look at the culture and turnover issues at the middle school or consider increasing the rigor at the high school by adding another class to students' schedule. Several nearby high schools from surrounding communities have students taking eight classes a year, so I ask those who can act to act quickly and to act correctly. These concerns cannot be laid solely at the feet of the school committee, and I ask all stakeholders to be better or try harder. The school committee, superintendent of schools, town and school administrators, teachers, and most of all, and I put myself at the top of this list, the parents of this community need to do better. I know that individually, many people are doing more than should be asked of any single person, but I am talking collectively as a whole. As much as we'd like to sit back and expect things to operate smoothly on their own, they are not right now, and we all need to step up to make it better, all of us. It feels like we're at a crossroads. Time will tell where we go. Will we roll over as things continue to deteriorate and school admission numbers continue to decline while we fumble around looking for answers? Or will we roll up our sleeves and do the hard work that needs to be done? Some of the hardest workers I've ever met in my life have come from this town, so my money's on the ladder. But the time is now. We have to come up with data-driven solutions to our problems and implement them immediately. My request is that all stakeholders ask what they can do to make this school district better and do it. We owe that much to our kids. Thank you for your time, both in hearing me tonight and for that which you give so willingly yourselves.
Is there anyone else present who would like to give a public comment? The committee also received, in addition to these, one additional written comment that we distributed and read before the meeting.
Thank you. Our next item of business, we have approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, March 23, 2022. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, second. Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? Is unanimous, Melissa? Thank you. We have warrants, G 32, 33, R 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, L 81, 82, 83, 84, and FS 57, 58, 59, 60, and 61. Is there a motion? Thank you. Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? Unanimous? Well, yeah, sorry. CBO 5. Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? Unanimous. Payroll ending 3/30/2022. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? It's unanimous. And sped 32. Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? Great, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Mrs. Newhouse, I'm trying to say your name as much as I can this evening, even though I can't see you beyond the bouquet of flowers, but we're trying to make sure you're in the minutes repeatedly tonight. We're sad to say your last name is. All right, that brings us to item six, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening. There are a few items listed under the Superintendent's Report, three specifically, two of which have items that are included in your packet, and I'll go in order, and one additional item just at the end. First off, to bring to your attention and that of the community, the athletic summer camp update. It is that time of the year again in which we are returning really in full force, which is a great thing now that we have, at least at this point in time, certainly moved beyond some of the restrictions that were in place previously. The memo provides an overview of the athletic summer camps. These, as I've come to learn and many of you know, are really a much looked forward to thing here, a set of activities in Wilmington. And as you can see in the memo, provides an overview of the many camps that are being planned that will kick off towards the end of June. So we're excited to have these back. We know at the heart of this program is really about providing opportunities for our Wilmington students to get involved in some really meaningful and productive opportunities throughout the summer. And so really just informational to share with you that that's coming back in quickly. The last day of school is the second item, rather, and as is what is customary to bring to your attention what the last day is as of this point in time. And hopefully, this does not change, whether related or otherwise. But as you'll note, based upon the number of snow days that we've had this year, the last official day of school for the 2021-22 school year is Friday, June 17. And so I bring that to your attention. The third item is North Intermediate Principal Search. And just a brief update on that, as members of the committee and community are aware, we are in the process of searching for a new principal for the North Intermediate School, given the fact that Ms. McMiniman has recently renounced her plans to retire at the end of this school year. Much work has unfolded over the last couple of weeks or so, under the direction of Mr. Stern Armstrong, and we're excited to move forward to the next phase of the process. There are four finalists or semifinalists that are being considered, and activity is really continuing intensely over the course of the next week or so. The four candidates will be visiting the district at the latter part of this week, tomorrow and Friday, and we will be conducting site visits to all four candidates' home schools the very first part of next week. So we'll keep you certainly posted on those developments. And as we always do, try and provide opportunities for members of the North Community, our families, as well as staff, to meet the candidates and to provide feedback on what seems to be the best fit for the school community in this position at this point in time. We do have another search that we'll be embarking upon quite soon with the recent announcement of the retirement at the Woburn Street School of Ms. Sullivan. She shared that news with her community very recently, yesterday, I think, in fact, and so stay tuned for more information on that as we move forward. So it has been an active time for leadership searches. It's involved an awful lot of folks involved in those. Obviously, these are key vacancies to fill, and we've just come into a time period of a number of retirements with three, now three principals who have decided to retire at the end of the school year. Last item is not listed specifically on the agenda, but I just want to certainly just take a moment and acknowledge the fact that we obviously had about a week ago an unfortunate, very unfortunate circumstance here at the high school that I know has caught the attention of many, and certainly not the least of which is my own and members of our leadership team. You know, there was an awful lot of good and important work that I believe was well underway prior to the pandemic related to our work with families and with staff around bullying and harassment. And that work continues. Certainly, some of the opportunities for connections with families, some of the work with connections with staff may have been interrupted in some degree, to some degree, rather, with COVID, but it remains at the core of what I know many of us believe is important for trying to shore up and establish cultures in our school communities that are safe and that are welcoming for all. That work will continue, and messaging will continue in the near term around the work that we plan to continue. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that although this latest incident is now a week behind us, certainly the focus and attention will continue on doing all that we can to work with our students, with our staff, and with our parents' guardians collectively, because we do need everyone's help. And with that, that concludes the Superintendent's Report, and I'm happy to take any questions if members of the committee have. She got disconnected.
Questions or comments for Dr. Brand?
Melissa, you're back on.
Thank you.
I had a quick question about the summer camps, so this might actually be better that Mia can address that. Last year, in addition to the traditional sports, I believe that there was also a conditioning option?
Yes, so we found that while our coaches were doing a good job, I'm not sure the expertise was there with regards to strengthening the conditioning around the very specific needs that we have. So we are working to partner with Athletic Evolution, which has just been established in Wilmington, to use their strength and conditioning services as an opportunity for grades six through 12, so we can start incorporating middle school students as well to help build that connection between the high school and middle school students as well as our athletic programs. So the goal is to work with them for our summer programs as well as year-round, and it will be similar cost-wise to what was offered here. And they're very interested in, you know, having a desire to build that connection within the Wilmington community and for our student athletes. So there will be something similar, it just won't be run through our, one, maybe run by our coaches.
Other questions, comments? That was you, Melissa. I'll just make a comment again about the summer sports clinics, and I'm really excited to see baseball was added. Is that our first time?
We've added a few, actually. Boys and girls across and baseball and softball. Our, boys and girls across has been offered for about four or five years, so that will be something that's being reintroduced, as well as baseball and softball.
As you know, I mean, I know that this is such a great opportunity for Wilmington families, but also such a great opportunity to have our middle schoolers participate in high school and meet the high school coaches, and I really do think that's an important piece of attracting some of our middle schoolers to the high school. So I appreciate the attention that's been given to these sports clinics and from all of us that have participated over the years with our own children. It's always been a fantastic experience, so I do encourage families to try these out. And it's grades one through eight. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, you know, we will provide opportunities if there are students that are in eighth grade going into ninth grade that, you know, want to participate. You know, we try to be flexible and making sure that we can offer that opportunity.
Any other questions, comments?
Can I, sorry, I was looking at this, and I may have missed it, so forgive me, but when does the registration start and/or has that information gone out already?
So we were planning to provide this information tonight, and my goal is to have registration open by Monday of next week. Everything is online now, including payment options, so we have kind of moved away. We've streamlined the process to make it as easy as possible for everyone to sign up.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. So this is our meeting. I'm so sorry. But if you want to write it down and bring it to me, I can ask Mia. I've been pretty firm on that across this past year, just because we've had so many people who generally want to participate, but it's not a public forum. It is our meeting. So, but feel free to email me, and I will ask, or Mia Muzeo can email us directly. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. That brings us to old business. We have school start time updates. Dr. Brand, and I think Darcy Martin is here from PAWS. Do you want to join us?
As Darcy's coming up, I'll take this. There is a brief memo in the packet regarding school start times and a couple of things just to bring to the committee and the community's attention on this also very important topic and timing as well, too. So thanks so much to our PAWS community group and Darcy, a part of that. We had really what I thought was a terrific and very successful forum on Wednesday, March 30, a week ago today, that the PAWS committee hosted. Again, their partnership has just been so invaluable and helpful for a couple of these very big recent topics for our community. And we had close, well, I won't steal it all. You'll talk to, I know, but that was last week. And really, tonight was just an opportunity to provide the committee and, of course, the community with an update on how that forum went. And then I'll just talk briefly about the next steps as I see them right now going forward, so thanks.
Thank you for having us. Actually, just me. We really wanted to have other members of PAWS, but it was just a tough scheduling conflict this week. So I'm representing PAWS, but please know there's a lot of work and people behind me that helped with the event. And we took much of the work that the school start time committee had already done and really just gathered all that information and wanted to present it to the community in a little bit different forum. So what we did was, we did provide an opportunity for people to ask questions ahead of time. So we had a Google forum that they could go ahead and submit their questions ahead of time. I want to say I think we had about 25 or 30 questions ahead of the event, and then we kept that forum up during the event, so people could submit questions during the event or they could type questions in the chat as well on the Zoom. So just to start off, sort of some of the themes of the questions that we received, they're definitely with themes. So I kind of chunked them together into a couple of different categories. The first one was really concerns from parents of younger children about CARES. So not only will CARES exist or how will it exist, but what happens after we make a change to start times? What are those solutions for CARES after that? So there was concerns for sure from the community of younger students. What does AM CARES look like? What does PM CARES look like if we don't have the proper staffing? So lots of concerns around that. There was also a pretty strong theme around why the middle school wasn't also prioritized for some of these later start times. So I think it was maybe three out of the five scenarios had the middle school really going in first, so before 8:00 a.m. So lots of folks had questions about why that was for the middle school, and then that sort of carried over to another conversation about what kind of after-school options exist for the middle school. So not so much related to start time, but right now, the middle school gets out the earliest. They get out at 1:40. There are some clubs available for the middle school students, but obviously CARES is not available, so they have a lot of time. These are students that typically don't have after-school jobs, so there's a lot of time after school to when their parents get home. So kind of kicked off a conversation around potentially some after-school options for middle schoolers. There also was a theme around high school students. By pushing back the start time, thus ending later in the day, what does that mean for students who have activities after school? So that could have meant athletics. We heard some themes around my student has a job after work. Now they're going to get there later. So there definitely was some concerns around that. And then really, just in general, I would say the perspectives were, some folks were like, why are we changing this at all to, we should have done this years ago, and, or it could be like, why is 15 or 20 minutes really going to make that much of a difference? So there was, you know, a couple of different perspectives and themes that we heard from the questions ahead of time. When we had the event last Wednesday, we did have about 100 participants. We had panelists from the school start time committee mostly. So we had school committee represented from David. We had administration. We had the high school principal. We had the CARES director, transportation director, and then some parents as well. So we had a parent of a younger student, and then we had a parent of a high school student. So we were pretty well-rounded in the panelists that we had at the event that were able to answer questions. I would say that the participation from the audience was really well. Another great thing was is we had representation from really like every grade and every school. So it wasn't like we only had high school parents there or we only had younger students. Like, it was actually a really well-rounded crowd, starting from pre-K all the way through high school, representing both sides of towns, both side of the town. So I think from an outcome perspective, what we think is really, the biggest outcome is that hopefully we're able to educate people of the complexity around this whole initiative. I think even us as a group really were surprised on how complicated it is based on the transportation needs, based on CARES, based on athletics. There's so many different stakeholders that have a say in how this goes. And so by kind of breaking it down a little bit more, I think we were able to, you know, show exactly how complicated it is to the parents so that they understand where we're coming from with these scenarios. I also think that it was really good to hear other perspectives. So for example, I think that you're sort of living in your own situation, right? So if you've only got younger kids, that's all you can see. It's all you can see is how are my kids going to get taken care of after school at CARES? And then if you're the parent of an older kid, it's sort of like, well, I can see my kids' grades going downhill because I can actually see that their sleep patterns are changing and they're not able to get to sleep as early as they used to, no mind how well we are at home as trying to put them to bed early. So by hearing those different perspectives, I think it did help people understand where other people are coming from. I think we noticed that just even our own little planning group, we were able to kind of hear each other's perspectives, and that really helped. So that was a big outcome. And then finally, I think the last thing that came out of it was, I think, really this desire to keep the conversation going. So as the start time committee and as the school committee start to make a decision around this, if it's a scenario that, for example, has impact to CARES, for example, parents would love to be involved in those discussions to try to figure out how to solve for those CARES issues going forward. So that was definitely a big outcome, is just to continue the conversation and the parent involvement as a change is potentially implemented.
Any other questions?
Well, don't go yet.
Yes. Are you going to talk through the next steps?
Yeah, I was, yeah, and I will. Certainly, I didn't know if you wanted to take questions first. But so the next steps moving forward, again, thank you so much for the PAWS partnership and efforts, their ability to sort of aggregate, aggregate, sorry, I think broader awareness in the community has been tremendous, and that holds true for the next step, which is sending out a survey, engaging in a survey that will go out early next week, Tuesday, I think, is the target date. And the intention of that survey is to try and provide a clear picture for members of our community around what the various options are as we, you know, as we engage into the possibility here of changing start times and try and get a sense overall from the community of, it goes deeper than that, but certainly that's the point. It's not to select one specific model or scenario, but rather to gauge, to try and gather and gauge a sense of where members of our community are at. We think that that data will be rich and informative to try and get a deeper sense of exactly sort of where everyone's at, what some of the competing interests might be, and so on. So that survey will go out next week. The results will then, the plan is to have the results compiled and then shared with the school committee at your May 11 meeting. Right now, we have a May 11 meeting scheduled, and so that'll be sort of a report of the findings. Where, what's the temperature of the community, where are the staff at? That'll be a key component not mentioned here, but certainly a part of the information gathering. but certainly a part of the information gathering. And then finally, the next step in the process right now is the hope that as a school committee, you'll feel at a place of being able to make a decision around a possible change in start times at the May 25th meeting. So, survey next week, May 11th, school committee meeting will be a presentation of the findings of the survey, the results of the survey, and then May 25th would be the hope that you'll have information before you that will lead to yourselves as a committee making a decision. Again, I just, I'll acknowledge that we, I certainly recognize this is a rather tight timeframe. I think to, again, you know, share some of the thoughts and words when we re-engaged in this a number of months ago, that I knew it would be a tight timeframe, but still trying to, you know, dig back up the good work that had been done and still stay true to try to push this work ahead. And that remains the commitment, albeit a little bit, you know, tighter timeframe than I know would maybe be ideal. But so, with that, happy to take any questions if you have.
Thank you, Darcy, for being here, providing. I won't start. See if other people have questions, and then I'll tell you. And then I'll give you my comments after. Mr. Smith?
So, two parts to this. First of all, thank you so much. I really appreciate PAWS group being able to really help facilitate this discussion, because I think that's really important, is having everybody involved here. So, thank you to PAWS for that. I know that some of the issues that sort of you put into little areas are issues that I think we're all really concerned about, the CARES issue. I know I have high school kids now, so I no longer use CARES, but I know when I had, my kids were younger, CARES was incredibly important, both AM and PM. So, I really understand that perspective. I like the idea that it's the complexity of this issue, because this issue is incredibly complex. Anybody who's tried to schedule, you know, sometimes just with your family, you try to schedule your family. Now, imagine that, like, multiplied by, you know, tons. Things get very, very complex very quickly. So, I'm glad that it was sort of helpful in getting it out there as to why this is so hard, but also why it's so important. You know, it's nice to hear that there are people who are hearing and listening and having conversations. That's always a good thing. So, it's not necessarily a combative situation, but it's a cooperative situation. I have a question about the survey on May 11th, or the one that's going to go out April 11th. Is, on that survey, are families going to be asked to sort of say, here's the scenarios, choose a scenario that you find the best? Or is that what it is?
Speak to it, Darcy.
Yeah. So, the survey is very thorough. I think there's something like 30-something questions on the survey. But what it essentially does, there's a lot of background questions at first, but then it will go through each scenario, and it will show the user sort of a capture of what that looks like. Here are the start times. And then there's some questions about, if this scenario were selected, how difficult would your family be able, or how easy would it be for your family to adjust to this? And then they'll answer. Would your family take advantage of CARES, AM, or PM if this scenario was selected? And again, that's going to allow, I think, for some information to be gathered around how many students could potentially be in CARES if, for example, elementary schools are now getting out at 1:45 versus 3:00 o'clock. That could change, impact the CARES numbers. So, it will go through each scenario and ask questions very specific about, how are you reacting to this survey? It's not necessarily saying, pick one, but it's making you react to it.
Okay. So, then the May 25th, is the ask of us to choose a scenario that we are supporting? Is that the idea?
I mean, that's the intention here. And again, to try and provide, I guess, a framework or a sense, again, of the community feedback. Do you have enough before you as a committee to, you know, to try and make a decision around change? And that's the hope. And as mentioned before, you know, it's also understood that maybe more information is needed, and that's something that, you know, we'll talk more about in terms of what that impact is on any kind of timeframe for an adjustment. But that's the hope. I mean, I think we can expect collectively that there's not going to be one single model or option that's going to emerge that will meet everyone's needs. I just don't think that this is a topic in which that will happen here, or arguably, that would happen anywhere in any community, from those that have come before us and engaged in this kind of decision-making. But that's the hope, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
I want to echo Dr. Brand that there certainly will not be any option that makes everyone completely happy and meets everyone's needs equally, because it can't be done, because there's simply conflicts, and there are some things that are mutually exclusive. But that's true of what we have now. And it only is harder to see that because we're so used to it, and we've already managed and adjusted our lives around it. So, we have to look at these new scenarios with that in mind as well. I'm very glad that the survey is going to go kind of like deep into not just kind of preferences, but try to get at the strength of preferences and, you know, how much of a challenge these various options are, because I think that's often a flaw in some of the way that we try to survey opinions, that you can ask for people's preferences between A, B, and C, but that doesn't necessarily tell you how strongly they feel about the preference one way or another. And so, you know, oh, well, more people liked A better than B or C. That was the most popular option. But it may be that the people who chose B really, really need B and can't make A work, whereas the people who, you know, picked A, well, maybe they could go with B, too. It just wouldn't be their preference. So, there really is a big difference between just saying, well, what would you prefer? And, but how important is it that it's one way versus something else? And so, I think trying to capture that is very important. And lastly, I want to, again, extend, you know, my thanks for PAWS for putting on that event and for inviting me there. I think that that kind of event and just this general outreach is really, really important in making a decision about an issue like this, because, you know, you can't please everyone, no matter what you decide. But everyone can feel heard, and everyone can feel as though the options were presented, and that the school committee was making a decision based on all the information that we could gather, which is very different from just feeling that, oh, well, they didn't really even try to gather the information. They were making a decision just based on, you know, partial knowledge. So, it's very important that everyone feels that they really had an opportunity to understand the issue deeply, and then to provide their information and their insight.
Thank you. Mr. Penley?
Give me back for a second.
Oh. Hi, Melissa. Thought I heard you.
Oh, hi.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to echo, you know, what David was saying, and just how pleased I am about, you know, one of the outcomes is really about hearing each other's perspectives, because I think that's really valuable for this community right now, and something that we all need to really work toward together, to sort of be much more collaborative in sort of how we interact and engage with each other around these things. Can we help the community? Because I've had a lot of people come to me and say, wait a second, I don't get to have a final vote in which scenario. I love that the survey sounds like, you know, everything David was saying about, you know, the benefits of that deeper dive, and not just getting people's opinions, but getting people to really think about the impact of each scenario, because I know how I'm looking at this is, you know, selecting a scenario that has, you know, the least negative impact on the majority of the community. Can we help the community understand why this isn't just every person gets to weigh in and have a vote? Because I know that question has come to me a lot. I'm done.
I'm done. Is that to me?
I guess that's to me. You know, I certainly think, Ms. Plowman, you raise an important point here in terms of the ongoing messaging around this all, right, this entire project, this entire endeavor. And so, certainly, in addition to just sending out the survey and launching it, I think that some sort of context for it and these next steps that we're talking about here would be important to share with families. And so, I can certainly work to try and do that. The effort here is to try, we've got, the good thing here is for even people that have not maybe tuned in yet to this, in the community, tuned into this topic, and this might be catching someone by surprise or such, that there isn't a good amount of information that we're compiling here. And I know my job will be to make sure that everyone is as informed and aware of this as possible, and including how sort of I'm seeing this go, as described a few moments ago, in the next couple of weeks. So, I appreciate you raising that as just an element to be, not to be weary, but mindful of as we move forward.
Mr. Penley?
Thank you. A statement, and I'll just call it back.
Thank you. You guys have done a ton of work engaging with the community, and it's, I know how much goes into it. So, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Dr. Brand, my question, I guess, is more for you. Looking at the timeline, assuming the survey goes out, the results are compiled, it's brought to the school committee at the 25th meeting, assuming there's sort of a, maybe a clear preference identified, and the committee votes to support it, am I, A, understanding correctly that this would be implemented for the next upcoming school year? And if so, does that give our building administrators enough time to implement whatever changes would be made? I just want, I guess, not trying to sort of minimize what's, but this is a big undertaking, and I want to make sure that if we're doing it, that we're doing it right, I guess. Not to imply that we're not, but.
Right. So, the first question is, yes, that if you, as a committee, feel like you're at a point on the 25th in order to make a decision around a possible change, certainly from on a practical level, starting first with transportation and the ability to kind of rewrite things, and that question I've asked a transportation coordinator multiple times, and the response hasn't changed, and that is, as long as she knows by the end of school, what we're talking, literally at the end of school, she absolutely has the utmost confidence that she can make those adjustments for the routes, convey that in a timely manner to families so that they know what changes that there are. As far as your second question, so, yes, it's absolutely possible. And, you know, again, that would be the hope. And, you know, there could be a clear scenario here, but collectively, there is a belief that more time might be needed. I mean, and I think that that we should be also mindful of, that there could be an option, or a couple of options that emerge that are really, just seem to grab the attention and support collectively of the community. But part of that feedback might be, but it's a little late, and maybe we don't have the time to make that change for September. And that's something that, you know, clearly, I suppose, could emerge as an option, too. As far as the, at the school level, to your question, you know, I think it's important to keep in mind, yes, there will be some adjustments, but we're not changing the length of the school day. We're changing the start time. And granted, some of the scenarios involve a pretty drastic change or adjustment. But the length of the day is not changing. And so, as it relates to that aspect, and from the sort of the oversight or management of the building level, I don't see anything that would create such a hardship to have to adjust to that that couldn't be the case. So, I would have confidence in that. If we were also changing the length of the day, you know, that becomes a very different scenario.
Mrs. Penley?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Penley was asking, if we change start times for certain buildings, does that affect any bargaining agreements, start times?
You have the ability, as a school committee, to adjust start times. That's not specific to a contract. The length of the school day is. The start time and thus end time, based upon that length, is not a contractual matter.
Great. Thank you. Can I go? So, my first, I guess, my request is, at the meeting on the 11th, when those results are compiled, I would just, and I know we can talk more about the logistics, but I would like to have maybe not the whole start time committee here, but at least certainly transportation. Like, I think it's going to be important for us to use that time to ask all of our questions and make sure that we feel like we really have the information we need to go forward for the 25th, right? So, we have all, so I'm just, so as we plan that, I don't know what that means, also having a PAWS representative, I think, could be helpful. They clearly have sort of the heartbeat of the community, and I think that we should just continue to include them as much as we can. And I think that would help us to make the best decision, that really is thinking about everyone's needs and requests. And then my other comment was just a thank you. So, I'm going to say everyone, I don't like to repeat whatever Ben said, but thank you, thank you, thank you, not just for this event, but for the Wildwood event, for really getting so many people out to Special Town Meeting, to vote in favor of the Wild. I mean, I think that it's been a short time, and I kind of look back on where this all started, and I cannot even believe how much progress we've made so very quickly, and how families are really feeling energized by this group. So, if there are community members out there who aren't involved in PAWS, I would recommend joining their group, getting on their Facebook page, but there's other ways to engage in this work. And I think that I've seen parents take on roles as advocates and leaders, and there's just so much expertise and talent within our families. And so, now to have this opportunity to collaborate with you and your extended group has just really been, I don't know if people can see how, what it has really done for us in such a tremendous way, to highlight some of these things, where we would get, you know, 25 people to, and, you know, it's such a different feel. But I'm looking at that number on that Zoom last week, and I'm like, I think I met a message in you. I'm like, oh, my goodness, they're up to 75. Oh, my goodness, they're up to 80. And I'm like, it's so exciting to see how much engagement there is. And when it's done well, and people know about it, and it's constantly repeated, and they're seeing it all over the place, families want to be there. They want to know about it. And having those multiple touch points, I think, where they're feeling like a part of this, not just, I'm going to listen, but I'm actually a part of this process. So, that's my thank you. And we're just so excited for what's to come. So, we really do appreciate everything that you're doing.
We're excited to have some future events, too. So, it's.
It's great. It's great. And it's so professional, and the backgrounds. I was a speaker last time. I'm like, don't forget to change your background. I'm like, okay. So, it's awesome. And it's just, it just looks great for our district. And I think that engaging with families and really bridging the home and school, as we all know for so many reasons, is just a key piece to this work. And I think we're doing it at small levels, as we've talked about in the past. And now, this is sort of like that macro piece that we were missing. So, that's all I have to say. In a nutshell, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
David.
Sorry, don't go yet, Darcy. No, I'm kidding.
Don't leave yet.
She's like, I thought it was going to be five minutes. What is happening?
I mean, as we've already talked about a little bit already, the CARES aspect of this is going to be enormously important. And so, I would like to ask that before the, you know, as part of the sort of the preparation for what's presented to us at the May 11th meeting, after the survey data comes in, that I would ask that, you know, the administration really work with Ms. Boja to look at just all the different options we have, and really kind of think through the different possibilities as best we can, so that, you know, we're, there's been time to think through that, and it's not just sort of trying to bat it around in real time at the meeting, but that we've had sort of some deep work already done about what the CARES options might be, because I think that's going to be a big sticking point and a big point of concern for the community.
Agreed. Thank you. All right. Are we good?
Thank you.
Darcy, thank you. And thank you to your group. Please extend our gratitude. Thank you so much.
I will. Thank you so much.
All right. Our next item, 7B, we have the FY '23 School Committee Budget Update. Dr. Brand?
Thank you. Really just informational and intended, really just to be brief, but just as a point of reminder, there are two items under the agenda, or sorry, in the packet, related to this agenda item. Again, just to recap here, that as you are aware, and some in the community are aware, the Finance Committee has recently proposed an amendment to the upcoming town meeting, happening at the end of this month, to reduce your, the school committee's operating budget for the 2022-2023 school year by $500,000. You know, this is obviously a deeply concerning development. It holds a lot of potential adversely to impact our operations if we were to find ourselves in a place as a department to have to make that kind of reduction. And so, just as a point of reminder, the letter is attached here, again, that, as you know, went out to the community. And I just wanted to keep this item in the forefront of your thinking and the community's thinking as it relates to the importance of this and, you know, in our operations for next school year. So, I'll leave it at that, but certainly. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, but certainly happy to answer any questions if.
Do a reminder about our town meeting at the end, but.
We have one, one more meeting before town meeting, right?
One more meeting, yeah.
That's right.
We have one more meeting before town meeting, so. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item, we have FY22 revolving account report, Mr. Rogiro.
Thank you. In your packet, I have a FY22 revolving account report as identified in the cover memo. The revenues have been posted through December and expenses are through March. So we have all the beginning balances and activity and the balance as of the end of March. Total confidence that will end in the black in every one of these revolving accounts. And those, a couple of them might show a negative balance, but again, most of that is due to the timing of revenues being posted and so forth. But by the end of the year, we'll be in the black in each of these revolving accounts.
Thank you for the update. Are there questions? Mr. Penley?
Just Paul, quickly, if I could, I've said this to you before, I'm not super good at numbers, but nothing jumps out sort of out of the ordinary or wildly unexpected, right? I know you said some of the numbers are negative, but just based on how and when things post, but fairly standard, I imagine.
Yeah, there's really nothing out of the ordinary. The only thing that might be a little bit is our food service balance is a little higher than it typically is at the end of 21. And the, the reasoning behind that was the pandemic for the most part, where we, Ms. Palin had put a little something together for me, but they had provided breakfast and lunch seven days a week to all children in Wilmington, March of 20 through August of 21. And they distributed approximately 51,000 meals per month. Typically pre-pandemic, it might've been 30,000 per month. In addition to that, we were offered extra USDA foods, which kept some of our food costs down. So there's some combination and that balance is a little bit high, but this reasoning plus, she was a little bit short-staffed during that period of time due to some leaves and some retirements that we're, we're filling those positions. So that's the only thing that's a little bit.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item, 8B, we have the AMLE Survey Results and Preliminary Program Review CTI Day Findings, Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Ms. Ingrisol, you, perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. The, there are a number of pieces of information that really collectively are a part of, a part of this next agenda item and I'll try and bring your attention, of course, the community's attention to the, to this. I do want to acknowledge the presence tonight of Dr. Quirk, Principal of the Wilmington Middle School and Mr. Kair is here as well too. Mr. Faircloth, our other assistant principal, unfortunately is under the weather and so, and so can't be here this evening, but I know he would have been. So the intention with this is to provide you as a committee and the community as a whole, an update. In some respects, in hindsight, as I look at this, the title here of the presentation, and I, I should modify as part of the package. This really is, this is more than just the survey results that I want to share with you. It, it really is a report of findings as it relates to the program review that, that I've been working on as one of the major initiatives of my work and priorities for this year. So with that, I'll begin, the, the C, as you know, is, is, is one of the priorities, the conducting a review of our Wilmington Middle School program. It, it really at its core centers around trying to develop in a thoughtful manner, action steps to help move our middle school community forward. And tonight is really the first of two presentations. The, the next one I'll speak about in a few moments at the end, coming in later, the latter part of May. Tonight, this, this presentation, and again, there's a lot of complimentary information or supporting information that is connected to this report. But there's really a couple of key things that I'll go over. First off, to give you a glimpse, a deeper sense of some of the recently acquired information from the middle school staff and the administrative staff and their input, provide you with an overview of the recently completed stakeholder survey information. That's the AMLE part that I'll, I'll speak about. And then just to talk briefly about some of the information that is being gathered from comparable school districts. The, the, there's an awful lot of text. I do not intend to go through all of this on these slides, but just for those that may be sort of trying to cut to the chase, the effort here on the slides was to incorporate the highlights, the key points that are included in the, the more full program review report that's in your packet. So first off, staff and administrator feedback and observations. At the end of January, January 26th, to be exact, we have the, as you know, the CIT days that are sprinkled throughout the calendar. And so I worked with Dr. Quirk during this time and her team to really designate the time for that January CIT day with the middle school staff to try and gather their feedback, right? This is through the lens, if you think about this for a moment, my, my intention around all of this work is to try and gather information, to try and gather data, to try and gather information that will be, I think, informative and helpful to try and identify action steps and possible changes going forward. And so that, that's the effort. And I'm trying to do this through a number of different feedback sources. And the first is staff, obviously an important part here. During the CIT day, it's obviously large staff as a whole, but we broke the group respectively down into smaller, into smaller groups. And the first activity was trying to get a better sense of staff perspectives. And the question that I posed to staff, the four questions are listed here. What are the current strengths of the academic program and experience that the Wilmington Middle School offers students between sixth and eighth grade? What are the current weaknesses or areas of improvement that staff believe can or should be considered to better overall the experience for students at the middle school? The third question was what in their opinion was, is working well with the current organizational structure? And then the fourth question, what is not working well within the current organizational, organizational structure at the school? The, the responses are, are highlighted here. And the, actually the activity that we did is used a plat, used a platform called a Jamboard. And I'm sure there are other platforms like it, but what it is, is it's a, if you can envision a group of people together with chart paper, maybe somewhat old style or old school, but collectively providing their, their feedback. This is a great tool we found, really, I think, at least from my experiences, the first time leveraged through the pandemic and remote engagement, but it really, really works very, very well. And so in the, in the report that I, I provided in your, in your packet, you actually have a link to copies of the actual Jamboard, the actual information that staff provided. It's all anonymous, which is a great thing, I think, about it. And so the next couple of slides here, these tables are, are my view or review of the information that staff provided. And I tried to identify some of the more common themes that I, I think were sort of jumping off the page, if you will. So the strengths in what, what the staff believe are working well at the middle school currently, if you take a, a look through the lens of looking at the program, academic program and experiences, and these are all not in any particular order, I certainly won't read through all of them, there's just too many here. But I, I think the important thing is from the perspective of our staff, there's an awful lot of good things working well. And collectively, based upon, you know, many staff that have been there at the school for some time, there's, there's things that are in a good place as it relates, from their perspective, as it relates to the academic program and the overall experience that the middle school in three short years really, of course, is, is able to provide for our students. As it relates to the organizational structure, a little bit of a shorter list, but that's also down the bottom of the page there. Just a couple of things that jump out, the team structure, really that was a very strong theme. The belief from our middle school staff that the teaming approach is really important and is working well and is something that, you know, is, is in a good place. The house structure was mentioned and some of the other things that are there. Opportunities for improvement for, from the staff perspective, follow next here. Again, all of this data is coming directly from the feedback through that CIT day. Again, it's a long list here, but these slides were really prepared for those that, in the community that may not want to take a look through all of the information that was compiled, but just wanted to see it in one place. So, you know, there's a, there's a, a wide variety of elements of feedback here. Everything from looking to try and bring online a, a wider variety of classes that might better match or align with learning opportunities for students in, in these time periods. Really, there was some interest in conducting a review of the current schedule as in place, trying to explore more real life examples into the curriculum for students, making connections with the world, not just their community here, but also the, the wider world. So a lot of, I think, really rich and interesting feedback as opportunities that staff at middle school see for possible improvement. Within the current organizational structure, this slide provides a deeper dive and view of that. What's on staff mind in terms of the opportunities that they think might be important to consider or pursue? You can see a wide variety of them here. Everything from trying to figure out a time, a structured time, sorry, for more meeting opportunities with colleagues, reconsideration of the schedule, a theme that carries on. The, the importance of trying to think more broadly around communication within the school between teams, houses, subjects and the like are just some of them and you can see the others, the others there. So that was the feedback through the CIT portion. I'll come back to, there was another element to that CIT day, I'll come back to that in, in just a second. There was a second part of that day in which staff helped dig in and provide some data on comparative communities, but I'll get to that in a moment. So shifting gears here to the middle, the successful middle school assessment report. And I just want to point out, I'm, I'm using that, the trademark sign there specifically because that, this is the actual title of a, of a third-party product that we partnered with the organization, AMLE. So I want to be sure to give credit to the exact name of, of the survey. But I want to go a little bit deeper into this because this is another, this is another avenue that has provided a whole lot of really, really rich and I think deep feedback and data. Far too much to go over here tonight, quite, quite frankly, but I just want to touch upon some of the things. So this was a survey that was administered to all of our current middle and high school students in Wilmington. All of our, the, the invitation was sent to all of our current families that are connected with the middle school and the high school in Wilmington and all of our middle school staff. And so we had a strong response overall from all, all of the groups. And the, the specific numbers are not included, they're included in the actual, I think, report, if I remember correctly. But this, this survey has been, we partnered with AMLE, which is an acronym for the Association for Middle Level Education. And they are really, they're really the leading voice in the United States and they do do work internationally for bringing together research and best practices to best serve middle level education or middle school students, right? The young adolescent that generally is, is really between, not generally, but is between grade five and grade nine. And so we came across this survey instrument that is a well-vetted, research-based survey tool that tries to probe, for those that use it, a deeper dive around what's, what are, what are, based upon the feedback, what aligns with current principles for effective middle level education. And it's really, it's a, it's a really comprehensive study. The full report is almost actually 100 pages. So it is linked in the overall report for those that might be interested in pursuing it. It is data-rich, statistically driven in terms of the analysis, but there are also, for those that might not be so mathematically or statistically, not necessarily a strong suit, there's a really strong narrative section for, for all of the reports. So it subdivides the responses into three sections. The first area is culture and climate. And so the, this survey had an assemblage of, of questions that really centered around getting at people's perceptions and views of culture and climate. There were a number of strengths that were identified and, and these just touch upon some of them. And the full report provides a more comprehensive overview. But there are a number of strengths, including the fact that the school staff at the middle school truly enjoy working with this age group. This is a unique age group, the young adolescents. And there was a really strong theme, strong themes rather, sorry, around that. That, that there's a, on the teacher's part, the staff's part, really deep connections that they try and forge with their students. And that includes relationships with students and that the school as a whole is, is considered to be safe physically for staff to work in and that they can do their job while trying to also help support the overall safety of the school. So that's just some of the, some of the touch points or some of the takeaways. For the strengths overall through the survey, around this second area that the survey subdivides the results into curriculum, instruction and assessment. Some of the many strengths are that teachers are very knowledgeable about the young adolescent child. They're prepared to teach that age group, that they've been trained to work with that age group and with the diverse population that comes with that group. That they engage students in active and purposeful learning and in doing so, they employ a variety of strategies. And that teachers seem to develop overall learning tasks that are achievable and reflect high expectations. As I'm going through these, these are obviously at a 20,000-foot view level, but if you are, again, interested and take a little bit of a closer look at the survey, there's, there's really strong connections through the design of the survey that point in a very, in a very specific way to be able to come to these overall responses. And so I just, I think it's important to point that out. Area three is leadership and organization. So that's the third category, if you will, that the survey breaks down their feedback. Many strengths again, that include the overall vision and mission of the school is based upon the young adolescent and the young adolescent learner. That school leaders model a commitment to equity and knowledge, knowledge and the nature and needs of middle school students. And that there are some, there's certainly evidence of some team teaching practices currently in the school, including such things as communication, consideration of student workload, along with many, many others. So shifting gears to, again, staying at sort of a high-level review here, the opportunities. And I know that there may be, you know, this substituted for weaknesses or areas for improvement or opportunities for improvement, but to shift that focus more deliberately to, to try and think about that as just that. There are a number that were, that were gleaned from the data analysis. Again, certainly not going to go through all of these here, but keeping consistent with the same classification into three categories is how the report reads. And the first, these were grouped together, Ms. Ingrisol, sorry, just taking a quick look at this, right? So this is a list collectively of all three categories, all categories combined, my apologies. And so some of the highlights from the areas improvement taken together include such things as exploring an advisory program as a, as a really meaningful way to help try and strengthen the foundation of relationships between students and staff in the building. There were themes and what was identified as trying to get at enhancing how the school as a whole may better support emotionally students while they're, they're there during their three years. There certainly were themes connected with bullying and how there may be an important opportunity to take a look at that work and the expansion of programs to support that work in the school. There were noted areas around the opportunities to better support and work with staff to support students who have perhaps experienced trauma or really challenging situations in their lives. Definitely a theme around looking to provide opportunities for family connections and community connections. And the opportunity to not just connect families with staff, but also equally connect students with their community, were some of the findings. Again, there's a, there's a rather long list, but just in the essence of trying to keep this all together for those that want to, that want to go right to this. So there's an awful lot of things here that I consider as really important feedback as this effort unfolds to try and pull all of this together in terms of the views. And in this case, and again, the survey did really, I think, a masterful job of taking a look at student, staff and family feedback. And then through their tried and tested ways from a research base, pulling that together to be able to generate a report. from a research base, pulling that together to be able to generate a report, a report like this. The third area, just very briefly to touch upon, is the effort that also is underway as a part of this, is to take a look at comparative communities. And so, on the CIT day, staff did a great and important job with trying to do just that, and we, we took a look, I forget the total number of communities, but it's the communities that we have been frequently looking to for different, through different means lately when we're trying to take a look at how are other districts doing it. The Middle Sex League is a prominent area of the districts, and I'll share this certainly with you, and it is shared, actually, in the full report. We also have some communities in there, and some might say, well, why are you taking a look at, and what's one of them?
Long Meadow.
Thank you, Long Meadow. And there's a, we took a look specifically at the Middle Sex League, but also the subset of school districts that the Department of Education has identified would, as appropriate districts to compare to based upon the Department of Education's analysis and factors. And so, there is a link here and in the full report for anybody who might be interested. But what the effort here is, is to try and take a view of exactly how are middle schools in Reading or Woburn, how are they structured? What do they have for teaching teams? Do they have teaching teams? If they have teaching teams, how many students are assigned to those teams? How many instructional blocks do they have per day? What's their administrative structure? So, all of that is data that is being collected and compiled. And I think that that's important as we consider possible changes or adjustments for our school to get a sense of how others might be approaching it. So, to me, that has, that has great meaning with that. So, there is a, what's unfolding here, and hopefully you have a bit of a sense of that, is an awful lot of information, some direct feedback through survey, some through staff directly themselves reporting out, and also this, I won't say it's a database, but certainly a collection of information, a deeper dive on other middle school communities. And so, where then is all of this headed? So, really, you know, this work, as I said at the outset, is about trying to get a sense of where we're at. What are the perspectives? What are the views that are really captured in a deeper analysis of the middle school here? Obviously, there's a challenge inherent in this because people can have very different experiences passing through there in a short window of time. Some families might have deeper connections to the school because they have multiple childrens who have passed, multiple children who passed through there. Certainly, in this survey feedback, there could be a family that took the time to complete the survey, and it's their first time in the school. So, there are all of these factors, but I actually think that the responses that we have through the surveys and the data collected from staff and pairing that with, as we look at other school, other school communities and what are, how do we align? How are we different? How does that all come to be and shake out, I think, is an important place that we're at right now. And so, coming back to sort of the next steps here, it's with intention to take all of this information together, identify the opportunities that seem to be there before us that might be part of program improvements that could be shorter-term or easier to pursue, and some that might be a little bit longer term, but that ultimately try and make deliberate steps, actionable steps towards helping guide middle-level education in Wilmington for the near and future term of our students and families. At the core, this work is all about trying to ensure, to me, that we have the very best middle school experience we can for students in that building, and for the students that are not in that building but that will soon be passing through. This work is obviously not just mine alone, it's in conjunction with members of my leadership team, and of course, Dr. Quirk and her team. We are working and will continue to work very closely together on developing recommendations, and those recommendations are what comes next in terms of my plan to share those recommendations with you at the latter, the May 25 meeting. So, again, I know it's a lot of information and a lot of information that is available for those that are interested to link off of the report that's in the packet for people who might be interested. This was really intended to just provide sort of that overview, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions for Dr. Brandt.
I mean, I'll start off sort of just thanking you for, thanking you, your leadership team, leadership team at the middle school for taking the steps to sort of get this all together. But I also, I also really want to, you know, when I look at the results of this, it's so nice to see so many strengths. I know that there's been a lot of talk about the middle school, including things that I have said in the past, where it's looking at the middle school in sort of these very dire terms, and it's nice to see all of the strengths that are, that are there. There's, you know, the teachers and the staff there, I think, a lot of times are really scapegoated for a lot of issues, but I think this process has really shown, you know, that, you know, shed some light on the strengths of those teachers and the staff there. And so, it's nice to sort of see two sides. You know, with all that said, it's also really nice to see that there are some actionable steps that, you know, the middle school, of course, is not perfect, and I think we all know that, but there seems to be, out of this report, some truly, like, actionable things, things that can, you know, get done. People are, you know, oftentimes, I think, people are asking the question, what's going on with the middle school? What's your plan? Well, it's like, okay, here's, here are some steps, here are some things that can, that can get done. So, it's really nice to see that. So, I just really appreciate all the work and the information that this has sort of produced. I have a couple of questions. I'll hold off my questions unless somebody else goes.
Is there a question?
There is, there is questions, but I'll hold off for a second.
This committee loves to start with. But thank you, Che, for your comments. Would you want to make a, do you want to ask one of your questions?
I, um, okay, I'll start.
You want to pass the baton?
I'll start with one question. So, you said that on May 25, you're going to come back with some recommendations?
Yes.
Are you looking for this committee to approve anything, or is this more of an informational?
Yeah, great, thank you for the, thank you for the question. So, you know, right now, right, I think that what is important to keep in mind is if there are recommendations that emerge that intersect, obviously, with some sort of policy or budget, obviously, of course, those would, would come through you as a committee, as a governing body, to approve, and so I would certainly seek that. If there are things that don't fall into those domains and that don't require a school committee approval, then certainly, and I would imagine that most will not be in a policy sector or in a budgetary sector, most then certainly that those would be recommendations, that this would be a blueprint, if you will, for what I think would be important as actionable items going forward to help, you know, guide the middle school. So, right now, I'm viewing it as that. But, you know, to be very fair, those recommendations are still, obviously, I mean, that is the important work that comes in the next number of weeks. It'll be work, and I should mention, too, not that, the intention here is by no means to just sort of take all of this data and then go into a closed-door room and come out with something. What I didn't mention, but certainly mentioned to staff in a communication that I shared with them earlier this week, is there will be opportunities that I'm going to work to provide with Dr. Quirk and her team to get these ideas and these recommendations that will start to emerge in front of the staff. You know, they're obviously an important component of this work, of any changes that are going to go forward, and so it's important to try and provide as many opportunities to engage with them as part of this over the next, you know, number of weeks that we have.
We'll come back, we'll come back to you. You going to pass the baton?
I'll pass the baton.
I should have a talking stick.
Conscious.
Does anyone else have another question or comment?
I have something whenever.
Go ahead, Melissa, you jumped right in, go ahead.
Want me to go, Jen?
No, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
I'm sorry, are you sure?
Yes. Speak.
Okay, all right. So, Glenn, my question for you is, can you help me, so, a lot of the themes that I'm noticing in both the teacher and staff feedback in this CTI day, CIT day, and also sort of commonalities with AMLE revolves a little bit around, well, more specifically, I guess, to the specific staff and teacher feedback was around special education, our current inclusion model, RTI, and, you know, the need for collaboration or meeting time among staff, which, you know, I think is critical for our educators, our gen ed educators who are trying to work alongside special educators. And my question is, to what extent is Ms. Brown-Legrand involved in this process with the middle school review and part of these conversations with folk?
Very, thank you for the question, very much so. And, you know, certainly, in these kind of circumstances, obviously, I'm sharing this presentation, but I can assure you that this holds true as much for Ms. Brown-Legrand and her involvement with this, with the other members of the central office team, obviously, you know, Ms. Elliott, social, emotional, and related programs, Ms. Murray will be drawn in, so this is, anything that emerges in terms of recommendations that will come forth, I can assure, I can assure you as a committee, I can assure the community, that certainly there will be a collective, a collective sense of support and collective belief around what's most important. So, as, as or if there are specific recommendations, let's say, in the special education realm, certainly she'll be involved. I'll point out, just if I may, though, that, you know, some of the recommendations, actually, there's a, there's a connection with, there's a connection there with the Walker Report and previous recommendations, and including, you might recall, one of the items that's currently a part of the budgetary proposal for next year, included adding another special education teacher at the middle school, specifically to try and support what I think some of these comments and some of the feedback that I think you're referring to were pointing to. I mean, not, not just another teacher, but, but that was a component of that. So, all of the respective staff on the leadership team at the district level, and obviously those at the building level, will be involved in generating any recommendations for change going forward.
That's great, because, you know, when I, when we look at the AMLE survey and, you know, some of the highlights around bullying and emotional safety and, you know, think about our students who are more vulnerable, and those are many of our children who are receiving special education services. So, you know, it just kind of makes me draw that, you know, that line between what the teachers are saying in terms of the special ed needs and the, you know, examining our inclusion model, and then what the AMLE survey talks about with emotional safety and bullying, and I sort of, in my mind, am drawing sort of a correlation, perhaps, between those things, and wanting to make sure we're really focusing in on that population of students at the middle school.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set, Jen.
Thanks, Melissa. David? I know you're next.
I didn't even raise my hand.
I'm trying, I want to get my thoughts out, so, no, I'm kidding, go ahead.
I wanted to, yeah, so, Dr. Brandt, there is, I understand that there is a video presentation of this information that is going to be available to the public from AMLE. Can you speak to that?
Yes, thank you so much, and forgive me for not mentioning that. So, there are actually two things. One, there is, for anyone who's interested in understanding more the information that was collected through this report, we, as mentioned, we partner with AMLE, and the lady that we work closely with put together a really, really informative presentation that if, if anyone's interested in the results but don't, does not have the time to read a 100-page report, I would absolutely encourage you to take, I think it's around 30 minutes, so it's lengthy, but it is really, really, I think, informative and puts in great context this report. The link to the video presentation is included in the actual report, I think.
I believe it's in the full-length report.
Sorry.
Principal Quirk also, I believe, sent it out.
It has been sent out. It's also been sent out to the fifth grade, our fifth-grade parents and their families, sorry. And the other thing I was just going to say is, well, I haven't done it yet, I actually do intend to compile all of the related information here to this project on a tab off on our website, so we'll make it available there as well, too, the video link and such. But it's a really, really well-done presentation. I know some of the committee members have had a chance to see it and others, and so thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, thank you. And I really do highly recommend that anyone interested in this and who's committed to learning more about this, you know, carve out a little bit of time in your schedule to watch it, because I think that, I think you'll have a much better sense of the depth of information that was collected and the patterns that were, that were discovered. I had, I think, similar feelings to Mr. Smaha as far as, like, looking at these, these reports and the presentation, of being very encouraged at the, sort of, the balance of isolating our strengths so that we can do more of that, and then looking at real actionable feedback of things that we can do in both the short term and the long term, because it's like, obviously, we have to think, we have to think in both ways, that we need to sort of grab the low-hanging fruit that we can, and then also lay the groundwork for, for long-term change. One thing I wanted to ask is, what is the plan, how are we thinking right now to continue to involve staff in this process? Because, you know, we've had this, you know, the CIT day, and there is a lot of the, you know, the research, and it's great to have all this information from them, but going forward, when we start to get to the how, when we start to actually think about implementing various plans, like, you know, how are we going to try to, you know, implement some of these recommendations, it seems to me that they still have to be sort of our partners every step of the way. And so, what are we thinking in terms of continuing to engage the staff as we go forward with changes?
Yeah, thank you. So, we have a couple of, I have a couple of thoughts that I intend to pursue in terms of opportunities to work with staff, you know, directly during their time, during their time in the school day. We have a CIT day coming up in May, I forget the exact date, but thank you, that will be dedicated towards this work. As you may know, some of you may know, there are, there's team time, as it's called, I think I have that right, in which the teaching teams come together on a regular basis. That's another opportunity that I plan to leverage in terms of collaborating with teachers, providing opportunities for their feedback. But as we go forward here, this will also really be about seeking and trying to support and create conditions for teacher leadership, right? That whatever it is that is going to come out of these recommendations, on a very deeper level, obviously, has to be not just about top-down and administrative-driven, but laying a foundation for what the changes might be and inviting the partnership of staff to be instrumental in that work. That's the right way to go about change, and it certainly will be nothing short of that as we cite. Some of the work, of course, may have to be administrative-driven, but certainly where and when there's opportunities to invite the partnership of staff in this important work, whatever it might be, we'll certainly be there, and I recognize that, and I'll certainly invite, invite that.
Can I, just one more thing, and then I'll shut up for you. One last comment that I want to make is that one of the things that I think was really particularly valuable about both the video presentation and some of the information deeper in the report, is focusing on those areas where there was misalignment between the, sort of, the family and student perspective and the teacher perspective, because, you know, anytime you have that kind of misalignment, it's, you know, an opportunity to look and see, all right, well, what is the cause of that alignment? Like, if, you know, if, you know, if the teachers think one thing and the families think something a little bit different, well, that could be because it's not being communicated. Like, the thing may be happening, and the families are just not aware of it. And so, that speaks to, okay, we have to, you know, work on that aspect of communication to make sure that they understand that that is happening, but of course, if it isn't happening, then maybe it should be happening, or maybe we just have to work on expectations so that everyone knows, you know, what is supposed to be going on. But I thought that that was a very, very interesting and valuable part of the focus of the report, is just like looking for places where the, you know, where the perspective of, you know, sort of, the internal perspective of staff and then the external perspective of parents, and then to some extent, kind of in the middle... And then to some extent, kind of in the middle are the students, who are not, you know, neither one, they're sort of in, but they're not, you know, in in the same way. So I think that was a particularly valuable part of it as well. All right.
Well, let's see if Jesse or Joe would like to go first, and I will go last.
I've got two, but you wanted to go, so I'll defer to you.
I have a couple of things, so can I do a couple, and then I'll, okay.
By all means.
So, one thing I wanted to say is that we've been trying, just so the community knows, is we've been trying to do this, a review for quite some time, and we've kind of hit some roadblocks. And I, now I'm looking at this report, and I'm thinking, well, I can't believe we didn't actually start here. So I know that we're here and we're not maybe happy that this review was taken as long as it's taken, in some ways, but I think that the data from here is so rich and so incredibly important for us to know, we have this information in front of us, right? We have, I mean, we're in the red with, I like being at school. I mean, that's problematic. Like, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not saying I read it and I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm so shocked. I mean, the stuff that I, as a parent of now two kids who have gone through the middle school, the stuff I knew was going to be green was green. But there were certain things that were surprising. For example, curriculum instruction. I have, those of us who obviously saw our kids at the middle school last year in hybrid, we saw fantastic curriculum instruction. I mean, it was strong. And I remember watching and going, oh, this is great. I mean, we are really hitting standards. This is fantastic instruction. But this piece of, this, and the video does such a lovely job of talking about belonging. And I just love that term when we think about kids wanting to be in a space, especially children of that age. And I think that this gives us some really interesting things to think about. And it, and I like being at school. I mean, that's sort of, as parents, we want our kids to want to go, right? And I think a lot of, and it's so, and I know it can be so tricky, because that age is just tricky in general. But in that case, we, we need to work even harder to make school a place where kids feel seen, and they feel like people miss them when they're not there. And I think that there are, there are pretty simple things, I think, that can be, that can come from this report, that could actually make a world of difference to, to children. And then there are going to be many more complicated things. I mean, adding advisory, which I think is a wonderful recommendation, but that's a much more complicated addition. And I think there are going to be certain things. I love this idea of connecting with the community. I think there are so many community members who would love to be involved in getting kids out of that building. And the high school does quite a bit of actually, like, getting kids into town and going to different art shows. And I'm like, hmm, that would be an interest, it would be great to add that. So I think there's some really exciting things that will come from this report. And so I, but I also want people to know that this has been something we've been working on for, for quite some time. We've been trying to, to get this work moving. And with David's comment about staff involvement, which I think is absolutely essential if we're making any sort of recommendations, I also think families need to be involved in this. So before that, that May 25th,
Yes.
There's got to be a way for, for us to collaborate with that, with that pause group, with other families who would like to be involved in some of this. I think if we want people to buy in, they need to, they need to be heard, and they need to, people need to know our experiences as parents and what, kind of, how we're interpreting some of this work. And students, I think, student voice, which I love, I'm so happy with this survey, because I feel like kids had a voice.
Yes.
And doesn't matter what everybody else says, but if a child is saying, I don't feel like I have an adult I can talk to, well, that's concerning. Like, we need to really think about that and add some things in pretty quickly. So, so those are, I guess my ask is, when, when these recommendations come back to us, that it really feels like stakeholders have been involved in this. And that it's not just, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. I think, and not Wilmington in general, but districts and schools are good at, like, these extrinsic things. Like, oh, we'll, we'll add this. Oh, we'll add another this. We'll add an award. We'll do thi, and really, what we need to do is sort of heal from within. And I think those things cannot, we can't just put Band-Aids on that. We really need to think deeply about, what are these issues? Now we know, okay, so now what are we going to do to get in there and, and start healing? So those are my comments. And I'll stop. Jesse?
So you sort of stole my thunder on one of them. I was going to say, David mentioned misalignment, which sort of jumped out. And I was going to ask Dr. Brand if, if when you talked about, you know, engaging the staff in some of these results or fixes moving forward, if we were going to consider, or if you had considered opportunities to engage with families. So I would, I guess, second what Jen said. I think that's, you know, incredibly important. And while I'm confident you've already given that some thought, I request you involve parents as well. I guess broadly speaking, my other question, and it might be, you know, it might be too soon to have really sort of dug into this, but as far as the survey results are concerned, was there anything that you've come across that was shocking or unexpected or surprising that, not that it hadn't been considered, but maybe was more prevalent in the results than you might have anticipated?
Well, that's a great question. You know, I would certainly start with where Dr. Bryson just went. And that is, you know, that there was, first off, let me back up. There was, I appreciate Mr. Smaha's questions earlier. There was an awful lot of really notable strengths and things that are, by all accounts, and through the, if we're just focusing on the survey for a moment, certainly not to discount the staff perspective, but this is a survey that triangulated the results across the stakeholder groups. There was an awful lot of very strong and positive things that was, was terrific to see, right? And that, you know, so that was, that was certainly one thing. But the, the concern, the shocking pieces that were, were some of the reds. And for those that have taken a look at these, you know, that color codification that's used, but the red is of concern. And being in the red for students not wanting to be in the school, like, I was a middle school principal myself and a middle school teacher, as you may know, that was certainly the bulk of some of my past experience. And I know that that, it's indeed a challenging age, no question. It does not matter which community you're in, which SIP code you have, it is a challenging age. But I absolutely know that we can structure middle school environments where maybe not every single one of the students there, but the vast majority feel connected. They feel like they have someone they can go to, and they, they feel joy and, and a desire to be there. Not necessarily every day, but, but, so that's certainly concerning. And the, the, the opportunity to provide spaces where, you know, where students are feeling emotionally safe, I think that's, that's the other. And, and again, it's, it is a, is a challenging age. We all know that. But that, that indeed, those things really jumped off the page for me.
What I had has already been said, but back to the balance between, like, the academic and emotional needs. There was a comment about, you know, having a block for teaching some of these skills. And I think it's more, instead of just a block, it'd be nice, it needs to be woven, it needs to be a mindset woven throughout the whole school and not just a block a week or a block a month. And so, you know, how, how does that happen? And I think it goes to, you know, giving the staff more professional development on, you know, the learning styles, U D I, social, emotional learning, you know, and working with the kids of this age, that it, they are difficult to work with. So like, I'd just like to see it more, not necessarily a block of time, more, how do we have a mind shift in a culture to support all this? I mean, especially with the last two years, there's a lot more social, emotional issues, trauma-based issues with these students and, with the students at this age, combining, you know, their natural brain growth and hormone growth, and then now you're adding in the trauma of the last couple of years and the growing social, emotional needs. We need to support our staff and teachers more and, you know, give them, I don't know if P D is enough, or do we need more support staff in there? So that's just one takeback that I've taken on there. And then to follow up with Melissa's question, I know we're adding another special ed teacher, trying to work back with the Walker report. Are we, are, does every house now, will they now have their own special ed teacher?
With that addition, yes. Yes. Every teaching team will have their own, which is the, I mean, from my both belief and, and, and experience, that's, that's the right model. That's the right approach, to truly strengthen and have regular connections with a special education teacher that is immersed in and a part of that teaching team to support students that are on that team. I think that that's the absolute ideal model. And so with that addition, yes, that will be the case.
And then not to bring us back to the finance committee, but, but a deduction, I mean, those were really the added positions. And so
That's right.
In my mind, and my fear as a, as a parent is, oh, my goodness, with that deduction, those new positions are the first ones to go. And so I just want to really alert the community to the importance of that, that, that although we are, numbers may have declined during COVID, and, so, but we still have great, great need. And I think, especially in terms of that model, I think to, to have to cut those positions would just be so detrimental to the work we're trying to do. So again, I would encourage everyone to come out. Can I do that on April? Just trying to keep it in. I mean, we are, we, we get to vote on this. And so I think it's important for people to understand that, that they have a voice and that cutting our budget by $500,000 is going to have severe consequences, especially when we're in a time of sort of really rebuilding. So. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, I know it's been said, but I, you know, just without the staff and families, you know, like you're saying, between town meeting and this, I think it's a public comment earlier that was sort of encouraging everybody to, that we all have to do stuff, whatever our role is. And I think, you know, for, for, you know, for people watching, you know, at home, people in the communities, you know, come out on, in April and, and not let these positions go away that are going to be the thing that's going to help the schools, you know, get, get involved.
I would encourage people to look at these results. I think that there's, there's a lot to be proud of. And I think there's some really clear steps that we can take. And I think that we can take pretty quickly. And, you know, as a parent of a, of a middle schooler, you know, if, if we all went in with this idea, and as, as an educator myself, you know, my goal today is to, to make sure that this child finds joy. Like, if that's the goal, I think we do think about things just a little bit differently. And I would love for, for kids to come home and say, I had, I found some joy today. Not that those words, but, you know, something along those lines.
Does it sound like middle school?
My mom, I found joy today. No, probably not. He'll be annoyed that I even mentioned that I have a son, right? He won't know about this until another time. Did you mention me? No. So, but I think that it's just so important for us to really, as a community, to just rally around these kids. It's not, you know, the same kids who are going in and trying to hug their third-grade teacher. Our middle schoolers need adults to go to them. You know, it's just such a different, you know, they may seem like they have it all together, but they all need, they all need people. They need all of us to just check in and let them know that we, we think they're great. And I, I think we're, you know, we, we can lose them. And I just want to really be careful about how fragile they are. It's just not easy. It's hard, and it's hard to bond with kids who don't seem like they want to bond with you. So it's much easier to bond with kids who want to eat lunch with you every day. And then there's kids who are like, why would you ask me to have lunch with you? You know, and I think it's those who work in middle school, I never did that grade, but I know they know that. So I don't, I don't question their, their ability or their expertise in that area. But I think as a community, we need to rally around our kids for sure. So, all right. Are we good? Are you good? Good? Okay. All right. Subcommittee reports. Oh, and I would love, can we just make sure that Alice Brown-Legrand is here on the 25th, or Kristy Murray, or someone from that office?
We will, we will have everyone here. Yes.
All right. Seriously now, subcommittee reports. Okay. We're good?
Wait, one quick
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Plug?
Yeah, go ahead.
For the, for the West GoFundMe, it's the alumni GoFundMe through the West.
Yep.
I just highly encourage people to check that out and participate.
Thank you, Dr. Quirk and Mr. Kyra for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We are going to recognize Joe Newhouse. Everyone's running away, but Joe, this is my favorite part of the meeting. The Wilmington School Committee would like to recognize you, Joe, for your outstanding contribution to the town of Wilmington, for your service on the school committee. Joe has worked tirelessly to improve education for all children in Wilmington during her four years, and we are grateful for your dedication, knowledge, and good judgment. During your tenure, you've served as the CPAC rep, an important advocate for their work, participated in many subcommittees, and you were a strong supporter for the Wildwood Building Project. Joe has guided us through some challenging times, as we all know, and has kept us grounded with her calm disposition. And we know that no one knows and understands Wilmington more deeply than Joe Newhouse. We won't be able to fill that gap, but hope you will continue to work alongside us in other ways. There really is no award to thank you for all that you've contributed to our town and the countless hours you volunteered to strengthen our district. But we hope we can convey our deepest gratitude to you and tell you that you will be very missed. Your colleagues sent me some notes and word of thanks. I've compiled them here, but I will just tell you what the, how the themes kind of came out. Dr. Brand's very good with those themes. Mine's going to be shorter. Kidding. Wise, community advocate, dedicated, good judgment, calm, steady leadership. Thank you, Joe, for your immense service to the committee and our town over the last four years. We would like to present this plaque to you that Tracy has wrapped up so lovely. And congratulate you on a job very well done. Thanks, Joe Newhouse.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a speech?
I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve for the last four years. It's been a pleasure to work with this board and all the members. It's been a great pleasure to work with the administration. It's a sadness that I just unfortunately don't have the personal time to give, to stay in this position. And maybe someday I'll be back. But for now, I need to step away and thank you for everything.
We'll be knocking. Don't you worry. My text won't stop. Correspondence. M G's not here, so I don't know what to do with this, actually.
I like that you looked at Jay.
I'm this evening.
Jay, do you have the answer? Future school committee dates, we have our regular session meeting, April 27th. So this will be a little bit of a break for us with the school vacation. April 30th is the annual town meeting, 9:00 a.m. May 11th is our regular session meeting at 7:00 p.m. here. And then the election's not on here, but that is the
23rd?
23rd, 23rd. So don't forget to vote, Wilmington, April 23rd. And if there's nothing further, is there anything further? Okay. A motion to adjourn. Joe, do you want to make it?
Joe.
Joe Newhouse. Is there a second? Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Unanimous. Melissa, you're a trooper for being here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Melissa.
Hi, Melissa.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.